Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call the board for the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for Wednesday, July 15th. The time is 6:31. Just to note, well, we'll go through changes to the agenda first. One thing we need to change on the agenda is we need to add a 6D under New Business to set the municipal tax rate now that we have that information from the treasurer. So we'll add that as 6D. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Shelby or Bruce first?
Yes.
What's that Bruce?
I'd like to add after SLP, exterior painting, a little short thing about buildings update.
Okay, let's instead do that as 7B under Old Business. Is it his old business? Okay?
Yeah, okay.
So we'll just come back to it?
Same thing, sure.
Okay, so we'll do an SLP update. Shelby, any changes for you?
No, I'm good.
Gwen, any changes to the agenda?
No.
She's eating her own right.
Okay, moving on. Scheduled members of public, Archie will not be joining us. I'll also note that at the moment Mark is not yet here.
He's pulling in right now.
Well, now he's pulling into the parking lot. Guy is here in the office is myself and Gwen and Guy. Online is Bruce and Shelby. Joseph is not yet here. Then we'll move on to unscheduled members of the public. And Ed, would you mind introducing yourself, spelling your last name, just so we've got that straight?
Yeah, sure. My name is Ed Sippioli. Spelling my last name is S Ciara C Charlie I India D Papa I India O Oscar N November E Echo. And I'm a new resident. My partner and I just purchased a property on Ellen Lauro. But we're pulling in today to see what the select board meeting looks like.
Well, thanks for joining us and thanks for coming to town. Is there any?
Where on the road? The Angle Harts old place?
Yes.
And son?
That's correct.
Yeah? Okay. I love those tennis courts. Go ahead.
Ed, I guess I'll ask you before we move on, was there anything in particular that you wanted to discuss tonight or you're just joining to get a flavor of what our meetings are like?
I just was joining because I'm a new resident and I thought it would be a good opportunity to kind of learn a little bit more about Brookline and maybe get to recognize a few names of people in the town, that's all.
Excellent. That's great.
My partner Allison is here too. She's, she's texting.
Brian Simon.
Well, welcome and we'll try not to bore you too badly. So.
It will.
Well, some of us will. Okay, moving on to, moving on to number five, approving the minutes from the July 1st meeting.
Okay.
I will, Gwen, were there changes that you noticed on page one or two of the minutes?
No.
Okay. Bruce, any changes for you on pages one or two of the minutes?
Yes. I saw on the paving and grinding and the first line, the word submitted was so wrong.
Yep.
Up front.
Yep, got that.
And SLP update, it had Nancy Burke.
Yeah.
Should be Nancy Burke.
Correct, got that.
And then, oh, I can't read this. Uh-oh. Sorry guys, I don't read last part. Just give me a second here. Something about Mark Bills, something about, uh, four, something under Mark Bills' explanation about ZZ window or something.
Uh, yeah, probably at the end of the third line, there's, I think, just a few characters that didn't really probably mean to be there. Forty-plus hours, I think it was probably supposed to say in the 22-2 window, I don't think was supposed to be there. So, yeah, I have that marked just to get rid of this.
Okay.
Anything else? Bruce?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Sure. Shelby, any changes for you other than what Bruce has noted?
No.
Okay. And I'll say I had all the same changes as Bruce. So I would like to, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 1st as amendment. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Gwen, I think we'll say.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from July 1st as amendment signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me.
Yep. So it's approved with one abstention?
I love that. Wow, that would get you out of here.
All right. Moving on to the first item of New Business, 68 Road Project Discussion. So I mentioned, and I'll mention it to Mark who's not here, but Archie called me about an hour ago. He's not going to make it, but he was fine with us to continue with this discussion without him. So I guess, Mark, let's, what are the, from the list that we left off with a couple of meetings ago, what are additional road projects that we haven't yet started to talk about?
Okay, well, I believe that there was a slight issue of tree removal. And on one section of Hill Road, there's a section of about 25 trees that I flagged to be shown to tree removal companies to take down so that we can create a better ditch along the side of Hill Road. Right now, the ledge is, is the issue and we can't correct the ledge issue until the trees are done. So that's, that's one project. You know, I think we talked about, we have some grants, some grant work to be done at some point on Parker Road. There's going to be some stone line ditching. There's going to be tree removal there which, which could be done by Green Mountain Tower Company. And so we're waiting to get, that's the first step, getting the trees removed. Then they're going to move the tower lines. Right now, the tower lines go directly down the center of the road, which makes it tough to do any ditch work or, you know, spread gravels. At some point, it'll have a gravel added to the road surface to create a good ground for runoff. And this is all part of the Clean Water Act. Let me see.
So I'll just note on that that I, the last time I've reached out to Jeff Nugent at Wyndham Regional about that, he hadn't heard anything about that. But all, I'm making a note to maybe ping him again to see if he's heard anything.
Sure.
We don't really know what the status of that Better Backroads Grant is right now.
Let's see. As far as the list goes on, there's more sign work to be done. And of course, that's upgrading and replacing old faded signs. We have an issue on Hill Road where when we receive heavy rains or in the spring, it's runoff and snow melt. There's a driveway in the area of Jimmy Rogers driveway, which is outside of the town right away, but it tends to, the brook will jump the bank and runs into the town road, eroding under pavement. So that's an issue that I'd like to correct this summer. Like to talk to the landowners about creating a drainage along the roadside, beefing up the, the road edge, armoring it with heavier stone so that the water doesn't erode underneath the pavement. So that's a small project. We're going to, since our paving is going to take place this summer in hopes, I have some roadside work to do near Johnny Swing Shop, the area where it's a lot of old stumps that will be removed and fix the edge so it can be maintained better for mowing. There's some old sheet fence that's put in the town right away, no longer being used, which will get removed. And also, the section right next to this is now where she pulls in and out of her house will have some grading done to allow for, in winter time right there, that's another area where when, when the plow truck goes through, a lot of times the snow can't get shoved back far enough and it falls back to the road. So we're just gonna, the bank is very steep and what we would do is just slope it off at a little better of an angle, create a better shoulder ditch for drainage. We have a section on Whitney Hill that I would like to get to this summer. It's a road widening. We've already had the trees cut and those were cut by the power company at no expense. But it's a very narrow area. Again, it's plowing in the winter. It would improve the, the plowing, improve drainage. And I put an extension of approximately 10 feet on the existing culvert to make a better passage up through the top of the hill. And, and also, one of the drainage issues to that project is ledge. So again, it would take a little bit of, when I'm saying ledge removal, I'm talking about a hydraulic hammer on an excavator, which we've had some work done in the past few years on Athens Road. So there'll be some ditches created by removing some ledge. Also coming up, I talked with Archie and me and Guy previously looked at this project on the intersection of Kirsch Road and Hill Road. The first culvert up the dirt road on Kirsch, the culvert stays flooded, which the, the brook back feeds into the culvert and that creates kind of a wet, muddy springtime and it keeps the road very riled up until it has a chance to dry. So basically, we talked to an engineer, the A and R guy. And we started this project a year ago. Didn't happen, it didn't take place last summer. So Archie's meeting with this guy on Monday and I'm going to meet with them again. And this is, the guy's got to show us exactly what he wants done. Just gonna, what, what happened was the brook has built up silt and rubble from ever since Irene came through town. So it's built the middle of the brook up to the point where the water can't drain out of the ditch that comes from the culvert under the road. So this is a one-day project. The cost of the project's somewhere in like a thousand, $1,200 project, which again is part of our budget, I believe. But in order to get this project done, it has to be done with A and R.
Well, when he visited us last year or two years ago, he still has to come back again?
Yes, he's, he's going to be in town, so he can come in to, to show Archie and refresh my own knowledge, but to tell us what he'd like to have done. So that, that's planned for sometime this summer. And again, I've got seven to eight culvert sites planned to replace our 18-inch standard-sized culverts, plastic culverts for this summer. And after the okay from the select board to rent a machine, which will be here July 20th for one month, and I'm in hopes to do the several culverts with that machine is what is improvements all over town. Basically, I'll be cleaning culverts that are silted in, correcting ditches, correcting So the machine will be used for, you know, multiple projects throughout town. So that's, that's a part of what I have to go for quite a distance this summer. There'll be some more gravel applied to the roads since fiscal year ended, we're on the new fiscal year and we're budgeted for more gravel. In the spring, we started out with crushed stone. And when the roads dried, we applied inch and a half crushed gravel over the top of the crushed dome. I would say that Athens Road is very good shape at this point, shouldn't need anything more. Whitney Hill is completed with the exception of if we do the widening section, which is approximately 300 feet in length. That may take a little gravel. So the, the roads that need gravel are Whitney Mountain. Being a hill, you tend to lose a lot of surface gravel due to erosion and dust. So we will be applying more crushed gravel to the roads as needed, where needed, being conservative without it, but it's something that always needs to be done. I'm just about finished with a tree removal tally. I did a lot before the last meeting. And when I was mowing, I, I had also located another several trees to, to ribbon and then I will make some phone calls to, to see if there's interest in contract service for that I know, I don't know if I'm jumping the gun about, you know, the road supervisor, select supervisors.
Yeah, go ahead, just keep rolling. We can do it all in this.
All right.
It all overlaps.
I wasn't sure about how the town felt if we wanted to figure out another area for crack sealing, you know, another mile of crack sealing, one day's worth. If everybody felt that the crack sealing is working, saving the town money and, you know, slowing down the, the road from deteriorating. So that was a question I have for the board.
Why don't we just quickly pause on that and just get, I mean, I'd say that I'll, I'll start. I am in favor of doing it. I think it would make sense to wait and see what we get as far as RFPs for Hill Road and what all of that ends up being potentially cost-wise, but I don't think there's any harm in identifying where we might best do it if we decide we want to pull the trigger on it. Gwen, what's your feeling about?
I agree that it definitely helps and I think it helps save the cave roads and I agree that maybe we should wait and see how the finances go with setting certain things and that can be discussed.
Yeah.
You know, because they can do that within, you know, reason.
Right. Bruce, what's your feeling about potentially looking at doing some more crack sealing this year?
Wonderful idea. I think it's a great idea. Quick fit into the budget, all in favor of that and the painting of stripes. We're at the precipice now here of really completing these roads. I think Hill Road's the end of it as far as payment, so yeah, all in favor of it.
Shelby, how about you?
Uh, yeah, same. Plus, even if it doesn't end up being in the cards money-wise, I think having it already planned out and identified is a bad thing. So as long as there's life, market, time to do, maybe it's good for planning.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, if you want to start to just as you're going around, identify where it might make sense and then we can maybe look at it more closely once we've got the bids for Hill Road and figure that all out in the next month.
Okay, all right. All right. Yeah, basically, what I've talked about, just keeping the gravel growth, a nice crown, keeping the ditches, you know, clear and clean, replacing, you know, rusted-out culverts, culverts that are underside, bringing them up to state standards, upgrading signs, those are the, the things that I'm looking to do this summer.
Yes. How did everything go with the mow? I mean, the mowing looks good to me. Did, did things go well? Did you?
Yeah. The tractor showed up a little bit late just due to the fact the, the trucking guy picked up the wrong tractor and so I was only, you know, he had to return around, go get the right tractor. So it was no big issue. It just made it an extra hour late. But the mowing went well. I, I feel like I hit basically most every place that was in need. Tractor worked well. And yeah, there was no great issues. I had a piece of wire ended up in the sidewall of the front tire, but the tire stayed up the whole time. I, I picked up some tire sealer thinking I was going to have to, you know, apply some work to the tire, but it, I checked it regularly, it stayed fully blown up. That was the, the air conditioner was a little weak, but it kept me, you know, kept me hydrated and warm.
Better than if you didn't have it?
It was hot.
Better than if you didn't have it?
Yeah, yeah. It's a fully enclosed cab with safety glass, so the, the, it gets a little warm in there without the AC, but it worked well. And yeah, I, I hit every road that I wanted to and felt like we, oh, report on the, the poison parsnip plant? I noticed way less plant this year than last year. Each year I'm seeing less.
We went up, we went up towards Stranton this afternoon. It's everywhere on the sides of the road.
Yes, I've noticed it thick, thick and thick on a lot of side roads and, and each year I'm, I'm looking forward as I'm going, because I, I watch every inch of the side road and definitely it's cut in half year to year.
Well, that's good. It's good that we're doing this and obviously the timing of when you're doing it is.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's by getting it before it has a chance to seep is, I feel is the key. It seems to be working well.
That's great.
And so as far as, you know, there's certain, like at the bottom of Whitney Hill, Whitney Hill collects a lot of silt runoff from the full length of the hill. We've talked to the landowner next to the cemetery across from Whitney Hill and Archie made contact. And the whole drainage to Whitney Hill is clogged for like 100 feet and the landowner, I'd have to go see him still, but it sounded like they approved us getting in there with a machine that could remove the material that's causing the water not to drain from Whitney Hill.
That's true.
Right now, it's, it's coming through, but it's more of a filtering effect for the water to drain. So some issues like that that are small are, you know, a few-hour job. Nothing, nothing serious or nothing major. And that's about it that I have for you.
Gwen, did you have something?
Yeah.
There's still a hole in front of the dumpster with water and it's, still needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I took the week off to mow and.
That's true.
And I had to work, you know, full day.
Oh, I'm just reminding, it really does need to be done because it's, it's a mudhole right now.
It's definitely, unless I'm making sure that it gets done. But I just, my time.
Yeah, I agree, the mowing was much more important.
Yeah, well, I will, I promise I'll get to that. Yeah.
Shelby, any questions for Mark on any of that stuff?
No, it sounds like everything's going really good.
Bruce, how about you? Any questions on any of that?
I'm good. We've managed to market a pretty easy size since we didn't have a lot of rain this year. Oh, Mark, so grass wasn't that high?
No, I think the grass wasn't as high as some years. And I talked to some of the farmers who were doing hay and I guess the hay volume is, is half.
Yeah.
And Howard's got a third, third, where he did usually gets adjourned.
Really?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah, it's like 3,000 bells, he's down to 1,000. He's not happy.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Well, thanks for all of that, Mark.
Sure.
As always. Okay, moving on to 6D, the COVID-19 survey responses. Shelby, what kind of feedback have you gotten to that request?
Yeah. So I was actually, I was actually pleased. I got like, maybe like six or six, between six and eight, I don't know, a couple of them were follow-ups on the original. They were like sent it and then it had a follow-up, so I was trying to check. But for the most part, it sounds like everyone in town, a couple people or one person sounds like they were close to the deaths that happened over in Wilmington. But other than that, most people don't seem to have been individually or personally impacted more than, you know, everyone else has in the sense that they're spending a lot of time at home and they have concerns about it getting worse or making sure they're doing the very things to stay safe. And then there was only kind of like two suggestions or things that people thought might be beneficial in the responses. One person suggested a, a community, some kind of way to like connect the community, I'm trying to find the exact wording, roving community bucks for all neighborhoods to carry human nutrients and supplies. So obviously, that's not probably something we could do, but I did think it was an uplifting one. And then the other thing was somebody had, basically inquired about allowing the use of the town offices as conditions change in compliance with the COVID state guidelines. I think they were, right now, I guess, so I guess I kind of have a question and response to that. I wasn't, I wasn't even sure when I read this response, I guess what our policy is for the town office and if people, the public are able to access it during the town office hours, as long as their access is. to access it during the town office hours, as long as they're exercising precautions. So I just want to throw that out there, I guess. What is the accessibility of the town office right now for the town?
Guy, do you want to speak too?
Yes, I would. As you all know, the governor has extended the emergency to August 15th. So consequently, the town is still in its lockdown position where we are a lot, we're not open to the public. We allow title searchers one at a time, and they have to wear a face mask and they have to have hand sanitizer. So we're still in this very cautious manner. And I want to remind people that we're like, we're almost like a fort. The enemy is all around us, Manchester, Lumen Derry. We've got to be extremely careful. So consequently, I'm going to still maintain the same position I have had right along since March, where the town office is close to the public and meetings. And until we get a clarification from the governor to change that, that's the position I'm taking right now.
That was good.
I guess, Shelby, was there any indication in this of what it was that the person wanted to have access to the town office for or what the...
Let me, let me find it, because I did try to find it a little...
Now, I have answered phone calls. We answer phone calls every day. I answer emails every day. I have sent many, many tax bills, many, many. There's nothing that people can't ask that they can't get by phone or email. Put it on the floor.
I guess, I'm thinking that the individual was just looking for more access for the town office. I'm not sure if it's somebody who maybe typically uses it for meeting space or not. But I was, oh, was Stan, was Stan in Oga? Stan?
Stan?
It was Stan?
It was Stan. So I think he was just, I mean, it's just...
Maybe for the caucus or something, they wondered about it.
Yeah, so, I was just wanting to throw it out there because, and I guess maybe my only thought in response to that, because I realized that even though I'm at these meetings, and since I don't go to the town office, I hadn't occurred to me that there might be a change in people being able to access it from what they're used to, if they do stop by ever. So I didn't know if maybe that would be a good thing with the state of emergency now being extended, as you mentioned, just sending out an email blast to the town and just clarifying the ways that they can access the town, any town resources and any, or lack thereof of ability to go do a meeting there, just to make it clear and why we're doing it.
I will send out another notice. I sent the notice out once.
I haven't communicated throughout this, but I was just like, this question kind of came up and I didn't even know cancer, so it could hurt that. Sent out a little, this is how you can get hold of stuff and this is your ability to stop by or not stop by.
There is a notice posted on the door. There's a notice on the website. There's a notice on every single bulletin board in town of the position of the town clerk's office and the lister's office and the treasurer's office. It was pretty clear. And, you know, if people need to revisit that, fine. But if you're asking me to put out another message, I will.
Well, I guess, I guess my mind is saying that I think that everyone's seeing that the, that the, you know, businesses, I know that we're not, but businesses are reopening. You can go to restaurants with a mask now. Things are changing, so I think that what Stan was getting at was more like with things changing, even though there's a state emergency, with a...
Sorry, Shelby, I think you just cut out a bit there. You still there?
Lost her.
Shelby? Shelby?
Absolutely.
There she is. Yeah, the wild card disappearing.
Yeah, hang on.
Is it right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. I just think that the confusion is that other things seem to be opening up and people are able to access things that they weren't at the beginning of this. So I think Stan was more wondering, it comes down in fact to the ability to access the town offices and is anything going to change now that other things are changing?
Again, the governor has given each town office...
Bruce, Bruce, first, hang on. Let Guy respond to that, please.
The governor... That's it. The governor has given each town office the ability to make a decision based on what they think is the best in the interest of the town. Our town has an elderly population. Both Gwen and I are in a vulnerable position also. So we're being as careful as possible. Until this scourge is done with or there's a vaccine, we're going to practice safe, safety first, and it's most important to everyone in town, because you never know who might have it and who's carrying it and who can just pass it on to someone else. So while Stan may see restaurants opening and so forth, there's also some thoughts that maybe some of these openings were premature. The best thing we can do right now is be careful, wear face masks, and practice social distancing. That's what we're going to do.
Right. And then the thing I'll add to sort of, in addition to that, is that yes, while retail businesses and restaurants and some things like that may have reopened, what isn't reopening, generally speaking, are in-person companies. I mean, my company is fully remote still. Most people's companies that I know of, it can be remote, are remote. Obviously, we are holding these meetings largely remotely.
And we're so...
So as far as our town office as an office space is concerned, unless someone has a physical need to get information that only exists inside this office, like the listers or the treasurers or the town clerk, I don't see that it makes, quite frankly, any sense for us to be letting people host meetings here. They can be done remotely, like everyone else is doing with virtually every other meeting, until we get to a point that we're in a different situation. So, yeah, I totally agree, Guy, and I don't think we need it.
Yeah, and actually, Guy, instead of like, obviously, instead, again, you've got a lot of notices and there's a lot of information out there. I'm happy to respond to Stan and just respond to the email saying that as a result of his question, we, you know, we reviewed kind of what we're doing and what the policy for the town is around the office. So I'm happy to reach back out to him and clarify.
Okay. And the policy is now is, is taped right to the front door. It's been there since March 22nd, and it hasn't changed.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I think that's people, with other things changing, not that it makes any sense for us to change, but with other things changing, I think that the question was just kind of being raised as like a, are there any changes happening here?
Yeah.
So I'll just clarify with him that we're thinking like what we're sticking with the ones that put out, and this is why.
It was a valid question.
Yeah.
If he has any questions, he can go to the website.
Sure. Anything else on the survey feedback beyond that then, Shelby?
Other than the happiness bus and the town offices being accessible, that was, that was pretty much the only thing that came up.
Well, since Joseph has a bunch of trucks, maybe we should, if he were here, we could
I mean, I'm sure that's what he...
Offer for him to put together the happiness bus perhaps. We'll have to save that for next time. Okay, great. Thank you for going through those and for getting the feedback from people and all that. Okay, moving on to 6C, the SLP exterior painting. So for Shelby's benefit, who was not on the call last time, Bruce, do you want to give us a brief? Gwen says very brief. Somewhere between very brief and brief recap of...
I can't do it in 30 seconds.
No, 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 well, I, well, I argue that you could do it.
That's SLP exterior painting. I have two other issues in that building I need to discuss.
Okay, but that's, that's not the agenda item. We've added an agenda item under 7B to talk about other update things. This is specifically to talk about, I'll do the 30, you, you don't need to do it, I'll do it. Shelby, just so you know, Bruce has spoken to the person who does maintenance for Susie, and that person has expressed an interest and a willingness to do a staged version of external painting at, depending on how, and at each stage satisfying Bruce's requirements on scraping and other things. And the cost will be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 or $5,000. So the main source of our discussion initially tonight was going to be discussing whether we collectively felt we needed to put out an RFP for this or at least solicit other bids. We discussed how everyone should refresh their memories on the town purchase policy and what its implications would be. So that's, that's the main focus of this discussion. Is that a fair summary, Bruce?
Yeah, but there's a bunch of details that I, that had to, we thought we had some.
Right, but there, I'm sure there are a bunch of details to the specifics of it, but there's not a lot of details to the overarching question of, should we be soliciting other bids on this work? And I'll start the discussion by saying I've reviewed the purchase policy, and yes, we are obligated to solicit other bids for this. We're not necessarily obligated, because it qualifies as a regular purchase between $1,000 and $5,000 or $1,000 and $7,000. We're not required to necessarily put out a formal RFP, but we are required to make a good faith effort to solicit at least two and preferably three competitive bids for this project.
Dave?
Yes.
Don't we have to bid below 7,500 or below 7, you're saying regular purchase?
Yeah.
To go up for a bid?
Here, I can read it to you. Well, we do not have to, here's, I'm happy to read the purchase policy to you.
Okay, go ahead.
Regular purchases, which is a purchase of at least 1,000 and less than 7,000. We require competitive solicitation of bids or RFPs, which may be done by the formal bid process, but may not be. Competitive solicitation includes soliciting bids or quotations from at least two, preferably three vendors, unless a sole-source vendor has been approved by the legislative body.
So now I want to do an RFP.
Okay, which, exactly. And I think that's the discussion. We could, if we, if we thought we had a handful of people that we were fairly certain would be interested in it or might be interested in it, we could put together details and just go to those people and invite them to bid for it. We've done that on other occasions for road work and other things. But we could also put together a formal RFP and publish a formal RFP and see what we get. We may, you know, we may only end up getting one bid from this one person, but, but we need to at least put it out there so that other people have the opportunity to bid on it.
From my understanding of what you just read, it doesn't have to be an RFP.
It doesn't.
It could be letters sent to the provider.
Hang on, Bruce, let's talk to him.
My understanding of what he just read is it does not have to be put out as an RFP. It could actually be sent to three or four providers that we know might be interested and ask them to give us a written bid. It doesn't have to be an estimate.
Right.
So that's what it means by doing, that's what he means by doing, soliciting. So it doesn't have to be put out as an RFP in the paper. It could be just a simple letter saying, we need this, we're going to be doing blah, 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 and see what they say as an estimate. That was what I understood that to mean.
Yep, that's exactly it. You're exactly correct. So Bruce, I mean, since the, since the knowledge and understanding of what the steps would be and what the, what requirements we want to place on any potential vendor are, it seems to me like what would make sense would be for you to write up that detail, and then we can discuss who it gets sent to.
Now we're going to wait till August 5th?
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, have you, have you written something up already?
I haven't done that in a while.
Well, but that...
It's very simple, fifteen minutes. And if I can add a little bit, or to what Gwen was saying, I know three people right off the top of my head that satisfy that requirement.
Okay, and this is, this is writing, this...
The three major painters in this...
Okay, hang on, hang on. So this, hang on. Okay, just, Bruce, please, hang on a second. So you'll write up the same detail and stages that you've gotten, that was what you described or gave to the guy, who's Susie's maintenance guy, who's given you this rough estimate, informal estimate already? And then who are the people that you would send it to?
Oh, with that in hand, the three painters, house sets, Little Mollie, Mollie Painter Painters, and Norman.
Norman Holden.
From, from, from Holden.
As well as Susie's person, whatever his name is?
Yes, as well as Susie's person.
Okay. Let's just, let's just hold everybody and make sure that these...
I worked some more on this.
Okay, let's just make...
I got, you give me a quote also on the backside of the building. So now, not just everything that we spoke about last time for Shelby's benefit, Shelby was the, if you walk up to the entrance of the building, rather than going into a little specific, it was, as you walk up to the entrance of the building, that's the front part of the, what I call the addition of the newer part of the, of the school, the left, the old, whole, entire old building. And then I added to that, I asked him to give me an additional quote on the backside of the building. And the grand total I'm getting from him is, is 80 hours for a king pole for $4,050. Now, that doesn't include, that doesn't include several things, and I'm going to have to write this up like you say today. That doesn't include several things. The one thing is, I wanted to add the side to the building too, because I got to $4,050. And I'm thinking 7,500, because I'm thinking, you guys, we're all going, you know, if we get to 7,500, I read the purchase policy today twice. So the $7,500 limit was what I was looking at. But since we're going, so I still have to keep to that limit, because even if we go the regular purchase route, we can't exceed the $7,500 limit. That's the, that's the way I read the intent of the purchase, the purchase policy. So with that all being said, I had asked him, Dave Shaw, to give me a quote to add on the backside, and I got up to $4,050, and of course, the numbers are now through my head. Well, the side to the left, so we had another $2,000. I don't think it'd be that much. I had a quote from, that's 50% of reserve give me for a quote. That brings up a six grand, but we need a lift. And I called Brown Enterprise on Lumen Derry the last two days and talked to them about it. And we could basically get a lift for $4,070, because like I told Dave Shaw, I'm going to take you first. That's, that's totally fine, keep that in the air. We could set up staging, we could go cheaper, I think the safer route would be to have a lift to do the sides. So, and that being said, if I hadn't drawn this up, I'm going to draw it up with the intent to do the whole building.
Okay, and let me just ask you this. So you honestly feel that based on previous estimates you've been given, that it is feasible to get a quote from someone to do the entire building, including the cost of the lift, for under $7,500?
Well, this is where Matt, Dave Shaw gave me a quote for Susie, without the ends, which is the north side facing church and the south side, sides facing soccer field. And that $4,070, that's the exact cost. Although maybe a little of the transportation involved from here and Lumen Derry back, hopefully we get away from the COVID thing, anyway, that's $4,070, 245, 20.
All right. Okay, so then I, I think this is worth, I think this is worth pursuing, like you say. I mean, I think, like you say, I'll say from my standpoint, an important thing is that you write it up so that you give all four of these vendors...
The same...
The same information, obviously. And then we'll see what we get for bids from them. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm hopeful of that.
There's no reason for me to go, well, what, well, what, everything I was ever going to do, we can, if you're interested in that, I can meet with people or we can talk about another meeting or... another meeting, or, but I just want to say one thing else here. I have done a lot of research on this. I've talked to one, two, three, four painters. I've talked to both building supplies in the area and Shelby Williams. So I'm putting it all together and, plus my own experience, I've done my fair share of painting and seeing. So, and as far as the details, we're going to get into that. But the answer to your question is yes, I prefer to go that route. I think we're in a position now, we have a willing person that's willing to do the job legally. Two people, oh, nothing that came wrong, that was of my concern, yes, safety first, was that I didn't ask him initially if the second person's covered on the insurance policy. He's clarified that. The person will be under, anybody that's working on that building will be under his insurance policy. So, and of course, we'll have to.
Right, I mean, obviously, this person's never done work for the town before, this person would have to satisfy all of our vendor requirements on insurance coverage and everything like that.
Of course, of course, we do, of course, we got to do that.
Sure.
We got to cover our tushy, without a doubt. And now we're not, we're not to shoot from the head here. I think we have a lot of this opportunity, if we expedite and, and we lead the way, dyeing our lives and crossing our Ts and getting this done at a reasonable amount of time, I call reasonable amount of time, like by the first week in August, because.
Well, Bruce, 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 let me stop you right there, though. That, it can't happen by the first week in August, because we're not meeting again, you mean September. But we're, we're not, we're not going to meet again until August 5th. So we're not going to be able to review bids that we've gotten from any of these people until at the earliest August 5th.
Okay.
Because remember, we're still, let's just clarify one thing, you're going to solicit from these vendors estimates for this. Those estimates still are going to have to be opened and reviewed by the select board and one, or maybe none of them, has to be approved. I mean, we still have to vote on accepting something, obviously, before anything starts.
That's, that's the select board.
Exactly.
This is select.
Hang on one second, Bruce, Guy's got a question.
Bruce, I'm just curious, have you seen any of the work that this gentleman has done prior to?
Yes, he's done work on the inside of the building. And I'm very cautious here, just because a person's done work before, he's done a decent job or a good job, doesn't mean he's going to do a decent job or a good job on the outside. Good question, Guy. That's why I set this up with stages, starting with the washing of the, of the building, scraping the, scraping the E's down, getting the, the old paint off and the priming.
All right, let's.
We do stage, we don't have a heating containment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All these years working on this building, had somebody crack it up. And I'll give you a small example of what I mean by that. If you walk through the entrance window, go past the other windows, and you see what whatever E was that painted the outside of those, the other windows, the window frames, it works like freaking hell.
Okay, Bruce, Bruce, Bruce.
I'm going to bring that up in, in the second part of the old business part of where it is, that you said I could talk about SLP or the other stuff that Dave Zosco and I work on.
Okay, we'll get to that in a second. Hang on, Bruce.
Not going to be a mess, Guy, I won't, I won't have it.
Okay, thank you.
Stop with the heartbeat.
Okay, we're good, Bruce. Shelby, any questions or thoughts on the soliciting the bids and then seeing what we've got? Any concern about doing that?
No, no concerns about that, sounds good.
Okay, Gwen, any concerns? Are you comfortable with this approach?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that's good. Thank you for doing that and we'll see what we get. Okay, now moving on to the 6D, which we added, which was setting the municipal tax rate. So everyone saw.
Excuse me? So you had, so I had a little start of the answer.
Under, under old business, 7B.
Okay, okay.
That's what we said.
All right, because you put that in between.
Right, because it's old business, very, very old business. Okay, so 6D, so we need to set the municipal tax rate in order for, once we have the education rate from the state, to be able to send out tax bills. So everybody saw the email from Samara, she's been helping Sarah get the details together. At the moment, we don't have an education tax rate, so tax bills can't be sent out yet, but hopefully that will be coming at any moment. But we need to approve and set the tax rate as we do every year. So I'm going to make a motion that we set the municipal tax rate for fiscal year 2021 at .4012. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Gwen. Is there any discussion on that? Everybody understands what we're doing? Any questions? Shelby, any questions on that?
Yeah, and sorry, just, I know we probably, we did this off here, but.
Yep.
Can you just remind me how, where that comes from?
It comes from, Guy, you want to speak to where the?
Sure.
It comes from the insurance essential.
Basically, it's the approved budget at the town meeting that we had, which is in the town meeting minutes, and also includes the expenses that were the separate articles, $22,000 for the recycling, I think $500 for the horse farm. And all that money is put together and then it's divided by our grandmas. And that's how Samara comes up with the rates given on this sheet. The town has an approximate, the town has an approximate valuation of $73 million. Of that $73 million, $3 million is allocated toward land use. So we basically have about $70 million, I'm just giving you round figures, but $70 million divided by the amount of money we need to raise for taxation. And that's how, that's a reader's digest version of it. It's a little more intense than that, but that's pretty much how we get to the different things. And each, you see a line item for each thing, so that people when they see the tax bill then know exactly what it costs for the recycling, exactly what it costs for our highways, exactly what it costs for the operation of the town buildings.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Bruce, any questions about the rate before we vote?
No, just to prove it to say this last year, like.
I think we're a penny and two less.
So we, another discussion for May for change.
Yeah, it looks like last year was, what actually, 41, 42, or 41? Yeah, 42, I think.
Yeah, so we're a penny and a half, maybe? Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Going once, twice, gone? Okay, all those in favor of setting the municipal tax rate for fiscal year 2021 at .4012, signify by saying aye.
What was that again, point?
.4012.
It's on the email that we have.
Yeah, I know. I was wondering.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, so we have set the municipal tax rate at .4012. All right. That brings us to old business, and the first item on old business was just a quick tax collection update from Guy. How is all that going?
Okay, the tax, the delinquent tax, taxes now are finally stabilized to a point where the normal people who are always a little tardy and pay their taxes and surface, we have now applied the interest and the penalty. We gave people a two-month waiver to satisfy their tax liability. So now I will start the regular process of sending notes out and certified notes out, letting people know that they are a delinquent tax property and the town will take whatever necessary arrangements to collect what's due to them.
Excellent. Any questions from anybody for Guy on that? Thanks. All right, Bruce, now we're back to you at 7B SLP update.
Two things. First of all, as you all know, that week I was meeting with the Stip and Nancy Burke about the stability of our water system. That was pretty interesting for about an hour. To touch to the chase, I felt in a lot of respects that they were kind of talking over me, but I didn't want to take it too personally. But the bottom line is this, the only thing that Heather Collins found that she questioned her, that might be an issue, is the sprinkler system, we have a sprinkler system in the basin. In the main room and a part of it is in, is in the, in the broom. And she was questioning whether there was a check valve on the sprinkler system in the front room. Now, for any of you people that don't know, check valve, this is, it's usually a brass fitting that goes in line that prevents the back flow of water. So she took a couple of pictures of what could, might have been a check valve there because the plumbing's old in there and she was going to get back to it. That's the only thing I basically heard from her, other than the building has to be inspected like every three years. And Dot knows more about it, I was going to get into it with Dot, and she needs to call me back Friday and took off to the cake Saturday. So if she's not back yet, so I haven't been able to update whether or not, then we have to go through this again. Like I said, Nancy Burke was there for an hour, she's pretty polite, she knows her stuff. But it was a little curious because they all kind of seemed to be like old friends type of thing, and.
It's a small community.
And I said, blow the hell out of there, and with people having a water system along. But we had a good discussion and it went okay, only with the only, the only concern that, that had the Collins remained, that remained, and she has responded back to me, she asked my email and she hasn't sent anything yet, so.
Well, that all sounds good.
Yes?
That's positive?
Yeah, well, I'm actually going to go to my Dave, I'm, I'm just trying to, I tried very hard to understand what they were talking about and had difficulty with a bit of that. But I asked appropriate questions in order to try to, basically, I asked her, yes, the main question at the end, what do you find that we need to do? She said, the only objection was what I told her. So I'm waiting to hear from her as to whether I, we have to.
We have to.
And I also threw Scott Billett's name in, in the action because Scott, Scott Billett would have a better answer for her if she pursues it further and when she states that there is something that she feels needing to be done, I'll call Scott and get him in the lobby.
Okay, cool. And then what was the second item?
Yes, my hero's back. Oh, love my man. Dave Zosco's back, thank you very much, very much, very much. All right, what we are doing is this, first of all, Norman Holden said we'd have the, oh, the phrase is just coming out, Norman Holden, just a minute, was saying he wanted the windows done by the end of the month. I'd like to have them have the windows done by the end of the month too. He's done the first, right, he's got three, he's got first four done, he's got six left. And he said he was going to do them this month. Great. Well, a part of that is three of the windows in the, the room that faces the street, which is now the toddler room, are need ropes. I bought some rope under the town's name for eleven books, so he can fix that. The windows are very heavy to lift, so I'm going to go over that with, with our, our lessons as to how to open and close. Okay, that's that. First of all, what he did was he straight, he fixed the door that before he entered the multipurpose room, before he gave, going to the offices, that was hanging off on its edges. Thirdly, we had, Jesse emailed me about a month ago complaining she couldn't open the windows, the storm windows in the foyer. And I tried to smack the windows, sped off the left, on the left side of the, of one of the storm windows and, and couldn't open the right hand side. I tried everything, penetrating, and I stopped.
All right, we don't need that.
Well, now here we go, open them, got them open. Had a, had a little fall and got them open. So what we're doing right now is doing what I just said, by the lifts back in, in the, any windows that need it. I don't believe the rest of the windows need it. It appears as though the only windows that need the ropes are in the, in the toddler room. Now, another thing, very unhappy with the way, pardon, let me back up. The windows have been done really well. The framing of the, the facing, the face shut of the outside of the windows, I'm not happy with. They're going to look bad, but looks isn't everything, but the problem with it is a leak, the, the storm, the trap time off. He and I, I think that I looked at it really tall, so we could take the screws out with our hands. They don't seal, so pretty nominally, what we're going to do is he's going to undo this, it's this Saturday, he's going to start unscrewing those storms, take them down, we're going to entertain possibly replacing the face shut boards again, pretty nominally, putting it back up, ready for paint and sealing those storm windows because they're hanging off by the, by the screws. Don't believe we'll be doing that with the window facing, which would be called the infant room, which is the one facing the south on the addition. So if you were to enter the foyer and go into the room in the right, it's that room. That, that window faces the south. I don't know if we're going to do that, but it's a little too high up, I don't know if we can attack that, but I'm not worried about that. At the end of all this, then I'm going to, he and I are going to go around to the, at least thirty-five windows and make sure they're going to be closed correctly.
Okay, cool.
But that's it.
All right, that's great. That's good. Thanks as always to you and to Dave for sorting all that stuff out.
He's my hero.
That's great.
He's a best. I mean, I couldn't believe we got those two windows in the foyer open. I couldn't believe I couldn't do it, but when he got them open, I was like, you guys, can you, I haven't talked to him, how the hell do you do that? Whatever. I'm good, that's, that's it for me.
Okay, cool, thanks. So moving on to summary reports, Mr. Tanza, what all is going on that we haven't already spoken about?
As you're all aware, there is an incredible push, absentee balloting for the August primary, which is August 11th. Right now, the town has already fulfilled 157 requests and it's got us very busy. Our voter checklist is very busy. So consequently, between that and a lot of people coming in title searches because it's the opportune time to refinance because mortgage rates are at an all-time low, to say the town is busy is putting it mild. But we're, we're staying with it. There's been no complaints from any title searches. Everybody's getting their answers and we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. But we do monitor the phone every day, we do monitor emails every day. So our town is in good shape.
Cool, all right. Anybody have any questions for Guy before we move on? Hearing done. Mark, did you have any other items for highways?
The only other thing I wanted to bring up was, I checked my messages before I came to the meeting tonight and there was two calls inquiring on milling for the RFP, which I'll call tomorrow. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I contacted the town of New Fane to inquire on the painted on stop bars in the road and the speed limits. And we played phone tag. I found out who the company was, they're a local company from Townsend, Vermont, that did that. New Fane spent $1,000 for what they had done, and I'm not sure how much they had done, but I know it was several sites that I've seen, witnessed, and the message said that they had also done quite a bit on Backstreet and New Fane. And, and New Fane thought they got a pretty fair deal with what they had done. But now that I know the company, I can contact and maybe get some better pricing.
Cool, yeah, that's great.
And I'll bring to, to the next meeting. And other than that, you know, just the roadside mowing went well and roads are correlated. I know it, it, when I was mowing, it seems there was, there's a lot more traffic in town now than we had a year ago. A lot of state plates, not just traveling through, but I've seen some of these vehicles nine times a day. Speeding is still an issue. I've had people stop me in the tractor and ask if, what to do about reporting speakers and. and ask if, what to do about reporting speeders in town. I actually witnessed, I was right up the road here, and two racing went by me about 80 miles an hour one night, around 8:30 at night.
Yeah, that's the one leader.
And I did get a license plate number, but that's sad for me. So that's basically all I have for today.
Cool, thank you again. All right, moving on to communications, email.
Dave?
Sorry, yeah, Bruce.
I think you might have misunderstood me, that I wanted to speak for two minutes about the buildings. I, you know, at the beginning, I was talking about the agenda, so I wanted to have a buildings update. I may get to that, Susie's.
Yeah, I did. What is it that you want to speak about?
I just wanted to talk to, very quickly, that I wanted to state that I had, as a part of my position as a building commissioner, I had been to that round schoolhouse. And so I plan on doing that in the next two weeks to update, to make sure that it's safe. Because if I remember correctly, and maybe Guy can help me out with this, that is to be inspected once a year for free. Those powerful beetles almost destroyed that building when we caught it. So I think it's my responsibility to go in there and take a look at it. That's for a second. The second thing is, with respect to the church. Mark and I were actually in the church several weeks ago, and noticed it's in pretty good shape, I mean upstairs. I went in again the other day, found one bit down, one small bit back. Okay, still doesn't look too bad. But I also read the minutes to the church committee back in March. And I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, but Leanne Parker has filed, filed for a grant with Wyndham, with Wyndham Foundation to finish the Stephen. God bless her if she can get it. And also, she's also, they're also considering getting a historic preservation grant at the end of this year. It's due October 1st, for the foundation of the addition. Again, God bless her if they can get it. So I was going to tie the two buildings, oh, I just wanted to give the quick summation and then I'm done, of what we got in the accounts. She thought, being Leanne, that we had $29,000 in there. But no, I just got an email back from Sarah saying we have $26,672, and a thousand of it's dedicated for the kitchen. And we have $14,673 hours, not including the capital improvement fund, which is $4,300. We got $14,673 hours in the, in the school fund. So once we get forward a little further here, and if this works with the banking, and we do this, and it goes where I would like to see it go, we're going to be saving a quarter of that in Leanne. This time this year, next year, we're going to be talking about taking, figuring out what to do with all the excess money from Susie's, and I know where I want to put it.
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get closer to it. Hang on, hang on a second, Bruce.
Bruce?
I've got a time, Bruce.
Bruce, any movement with the chips for the schoolyard?
I can't hear what you said.
The wood chips, yeah. So Bruce and I are going to meet with Olivia tomorrow, finally.
What about the wood chips?
The wood chips, yeah.
Yeah, and also, I might as well add this, because you're going to see the pay orders. You're going to see $300 to make. And what has happened is, I went out and bought $300 worth of LED lights for that building, with the fact that they're going to pay at least $200 of that money. I gave, I was bought the bulbs that Mark was going to put up and replace, which Olivia was bitching about. But this is what you and I are going to tell about Dave tomorrow, because we're going to, we're going to put an end to this and the wood chip thing. There's absolutely no reason after at this point that we should be paying for the bulbs to have wood chips. The building was vacant in 2006, when the CSC took over. Keen took over in June of 2012. We were there in 2019, Keen left, it's 2020. So as far as bulbs go, they use the bulbs, they're big here on it. And I gave, I gave Olivia the choice. We'll forfeit enough to cover the bulbs, $800, $100, or I'll buy the LEDs and you pay the difference. Which is kind of a setup in a way, because it gave me an indication how long they plan on being in the building, inasmuch as Susie's 51 years old. So in future, they're planning long-term here, and they chose to go with the LEDs.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now going back to communications. Email-wise, people saw that Guy forwarded, and I couldn't tell if we got it elsewhere. But the latest census numbers, which as of whenever that was, a week ago or something like that, it looks like Brookline was up slightly over 2010. Still less than 50%, but it's better than it was in 2010.
I think the numbers had something to do with that.
So I think, as we always do, if anyone's listening who hasn't completed their census, please complete your census. The other email that I thought was a little bit of note that went to us and was also went to the committee folks is about the building communities grants that are available, and that the deadline for that is September 15th. That was about it email-wise. Regular mail, there is no regular mail to review, which brings us to pay orders. So first up, we'll do the payroll warrant, which I signed last Wednesday. We'll do the same thing we've been doing. We'll go around and make sure everyone's reviewed it and see if anybody has any questions, starting with you, Gwen. Have you reviewed the payroll warrant, and do you have any questions?
Yes, no questions.
Bruce, have you reviewed the payroll warrant, and do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'm good.
Shelby?
I make no money, but.
Shelby, have you reviewed the payroll warrant, and do you have any questions?
I reviewed it, no questions.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-54, dated July 8th, 2020, in the amount of $1,319.53. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2020-54, dated July 8th, 2020, in the amount of $1,319.53, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any extensions? Correct, then the payroll warrant is approved. Now we'll move on to the accounts payable warrant. And again, we'll go around. Gwen, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions?
Yes, reviewed, no questions.
Bruce, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions about it?
Yes, I have, and no, I don't.
Shelby, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions about it?
I reviewed it, and I feel like I already know the answer, but the town putney native plowing, what is that exactly? Is that because we?
Somebody can correct the plowing pin in Putney. My recollection and Mark and/or Guy can correct if I'm wrong, but we essentially exchange.
Barter.
We barter to plow part of us that's in, that's only really accessible in Putney. And in exchange for that, we.
Their corner is on the Putney Mountain Road in Brooklyn.
Yeah, so we forgive their property taxes, and they forgive us for paying for their plowing. So it's a kind of a wash, and we give the money back and forth. So we have to do that only to make sure that there's a paper trail.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Any other questions, Shelby, on the accounts payable warrant?
No, that's it.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant 2020-55, dated July 14th, 2020, in the amount of $10,259.79. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shelby. Any discussion? Any discussions, or, just hang on, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-55, dated July 14th, 2020, in the amount of $10,259.79, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Correct, the accounts payable warrant is approved. Which brings us all the way down to setting the agenda for next time. So our next meeting will be August 5th, because it's a five-week month, so there's an extra week. We have paving and milling bids, which we'll be opening. We'll have, hopefully, SLP exterior painting bids potentially.
Yeah, it will be.
Other items for the agenda that people can think of at the moment?
Just to remind folks to be available on August 11th for counting. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, yep. So yeah, just a reminder, not for the agenda, but a reminder for the, that Guy, that we're going to need help on August 11th, counting ballots and votes for the primary. I will be here. Anything else for the agenda at the moment that you can think of, Gwen?
No.
Bruce, anything else for the agenda that you can think of?
Um, no, I have to go.
Shelby, anything else for the agenda at the moment that you can think of?
No, I'm good.
All right, then that brings us to number 13. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded by Bruce, I think that was. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at, we'll call it 7:50.